Okay, I'm gonna open the public hearing. And ask if everyone has read the legal notice? And if so, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of it. Has everyone here read the legal notice?
Yes.
You guys, yes, the person who I recognize who just walked in, you read the legal. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal notice.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. The appealing party is present. Do you have any additional comments you'd like to make for the board? Come on up and speak into the microphone.
My name is John Maldini, I own two one eight six Dryden Road. Is the Shelley Nickabacher here this evening and Ray Burger?
Ray Burger is not.
Is that Miss Shelley Nickabacher right?
It is.
Okay. I have a federal civil rights lawsuit that needs to be served on hold presently. John, will you go serve that last three years of evidence as had before? Let me see if I recognize any other names here. No, I do not. Who's this gentleman?
This is our town attorney, Nathan Witty. No, okay.
Hi. Do you happen, are you employed as the attorney here or do you work for the law firm in Binghamton? Work for the law firm in Binghamton. Okay, we'd like to serve you as well, your lawyer.
Okay, do you have any additional comments about your application?
I have some questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
You can address them. There are, there's four points in my appeal. I'd like to hear your reasoning behind those.
Well, we will do that after we close the public hearing and we begin to assess the application, which you are welcome to stay here and listen to our discussion. But how's this goes, I ask you if there's anything that you have in addition to the application, which we've seen and we all got packets with, you know, thick packets with all the things you submitted to the board with its history of your first application onward, as well as the history of the site. So if you don't have anything specifically to add to that, I will then ask for comments from anyone present. We'll read into the record any response letters. I will ask the code officers for any written responses and I'll close the public comment period. We will then make our, we'll, we'll talk as a board and make some sort of determination.
Do I get to question the zoning officer who made the decision?
I don't think so. I don't think so. This is your, you're addressing the board. She's not on the board. You. What do you think, Dan? I don't think so. You can.
I'm aware of anything. Here comes this board asking us.
Are you asking us?
Review all these actions and then make a determination of what we thought the correct determination was made. That's really what it sounds to.
Okay, so this is a hearing, correct?
It is.
Okay. I, it's a public hearing.
Yes, it's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing. It's not a hearing meant for me to address the issues and ask questions.
Right. It's a public hearing for, for you to, for your application to us to be considered. So if you have more information that we haven't received yet, this is your moment to tell us about that.
Then I would like to please ask if the board would be so kind to accept into evidence my federal civil rights lawsuit against the town and its members.
I don't think that'd be pertinent to what we're doing here. Now that may be. We're just making a determination, an interpretation. It says, requesting reversal on our interpretation, the applicant must prove that the code enforcement officer's decision was incorrect according to a proper reading of the municipality zoning regulations. That's what we're doing.
That's what we have been tasked with, not to give a bet. Go ahead.
I don't have any problem with him, I mean, any.
Adding it to the record?
Add it to the record. Just being submitted.
Sure.
It would be part of the record.
Sure.
You give it whatever weight and.
Okay.
That you feel like.
Okay. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'd like to just make some objections just for the record.
Okay.
I believe at this hearing, whether it's a public hearing, whatever you call the hearing.
It's a public hearing.
All right. I believe that to be an appeal hearing for me and my situation, I believe that I would have had the right to question the zoning officer, Shelley Nickabacher, as well as Ray Burger.
That's what you're doing here. That's what you're here. That's what you've asked us to do to to consider, for us to consider whether we think, I think that's the interpretation for the denied zoning application was correct or not. Is that how you?
Yeah, I do, but I think this is really maybe something we're not that familiar with in this town. And I feel like I have a due process right to ask the officers themselves why they did what they did and to elaborate here in front of the town publicly and in front of the board. I feel like me not being able to do that, it's, it's not exactly an appeal hearing. It's more for the board to show the town what's going on. And that's not what I really understood this to be. I, 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 maybe I misunderstand. I have zero experience with this. I've never had to deal with this. I was telling my neighbors, I've never been to a town meeting ever in my town. And I'm a big business owner who's owned property for decades. I don't get involved with this stuff. I just run my business. So I don't have any experience. You could be perfectly right. I don't know. I'll, I will find out. I will do hours of legal research after this. But I'm just stating politely that I think it might be a mistake on behalf of the board, not to let me get this off between you. I actually made a written request via email that both code enforcement officers that generated this impactful decision against my property be here so that I could question them. So, you know, I don't want to.
I'm gonna ask the rest of my lawyer.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is not an adversarial hearing in the way that I think you might be or have assumed. This is an appeal to the board of the decision. The decision was rendered that this is not an allowed use. Does not fit the, you know, within the definition of service business. That was the decision, the rationale or whatever, meaning that was the decision. If you have, I mean, I, it's the problem for an advocate to come and say, okay, that was their decision. I believe they are wrong because, and then explain why you think that your interpretation is correct. You know, the rationale or whatever that the code officers had, it's just clear that it's not listed as an allowed use within that definition. That's, that was their decision. You asked for, you've indicated and appealed it because you think that interpretation was wrong.
So then, then maybe I will just add something.
Okay.
To that appeal, because I'm, I'm not here to argue with you. I, I need to live with you and work with you. That's not what it's about. I told you my background. I wouldn't lie to you. I don't even want to be here right now and I must, I must be.
Okay, so yes, so tell us why you, you.
And please give me a few minutes.
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate the time because it's a very important matter. It's indicated by this lawsuit here. All right, and I had to do this lawsuit. I don't want to. Trust me, I didn't want to. Okay. So I speak three languages. Of course, English, like we all do. We probably all born here or came there early. We all speak English. But I speak Italian, I speak Spanish, I speak Spanish. I'm level three Spanish. I took the Regents in high school in Spanish. My best friend was Spanish. It's relevant because I'm very good at Spanish. I took Italian after that. I understood Italian from, from elders, but I never really was proficient at speaking or writing it and I'm only probably level one or two right now. But I do know this from the academics parts. Is that every word, your code that I wrote, anyone should be able to understand and no need for interpretation. Interpretation is when it doesn't have a plain meaning. There's no word. In the service business definition, every first year language student learns every single one of those words. They're entry level words. I went to law school. I'm not proud of that. I don't want to have to do this. This is like I was agreeing to lay and I have to resort to violence. I don't want to. I hate it. No one wants to do that. But I do know language. So what I'm saying is to not understand those simple words, this board, those officers, this town supervisor, these town council people, they cannot deny the simple meaning of those words. Also, the allowed use chart, the allowed use chart is so clear. I would say any fourth grader could plug into that allowed use chart just like it's a game of, of bingo. It is that simple. It is not. It is not specific. It is not meant to be. The language of it is not specific and was not meant to be. It is categorizations. It's retail business. It's service business. It's professional office. Nothing falls into that exactly. But it's only a category and those are all committed uses at my property. That allowable use chart is probably very old. I cannot attest to how old it is. I did not want to come here and historically research your records. I'm gonna presume of the license that I'm right. If I'm wrong, I apologize. I'm not trying to mislead anyone. But when I started to look at the definitions, and we do learn that in first year of law school, that the plain meaning definitions are very important. There could be some legislative intent in, in informing those definitions. And sometimes it has to be referred to if there are questions about what something means, just like in the constitution. But this stuff is just too plain and simple to see.
So is, is your, is what you're adding is to say that in your opinion, it is plain language, so your proposal to do data processing center hosting service falls into that category of ser, of service business?
I don't want to refer to it as that. I want to refer to it as hosting service provider. Because that is what it is.
How does that differ what you had originally defined it as in your first application? Data processing, hosting and related services.
So we are absolutely not here to discuss any previous applications. That is not the subject of this meeting. That application was abandoned.
Okay.
And if there were higher zoning green shots, I'll call it, designed by me, in other words, I know what it was zoned for because I looked at zoning before I bought it. I know that it was zoned for service. I know I have a hosting service. I also know that I would love to have that zone higher as far as like light industrial. Because I know the value of industrial trumps a level of mixed use commercial. So as a business person, I'm just talking about a business real estate guy does. By the way, it's my second piece of commercial real estate, so I'm not that sophisticated. I come off sophisticated because I come from the city. This is a Queens accent. But this is my second shot. I didn't have a problem my first shot because I just didn't. I don't know. Maybe because it was landscaping. It wasn't this crypto stuff. But I was in zone there. I believe I'm in zone here. If the first application was made because.
Okay, I'm not.
Yeah.
Someone you do call crypto hosting service business or hosting service. That's okay.
Yeah, it's a hosting service.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm not gonna argue with the board. I'm not gonna play dumb. But these definitions are almost, they're basically interchangeable.
Okay.
To be realistic, I'm not gonna deny that.
Okay, good. Okay. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I got to the part about the simple language, that if there was simple language in the zoning code, the offices are duty bound not to say no and refer it. They, they are to plug it in and apply it. There is, they are not allowed to interpret plain meaning of language. I do want to bring up that through that memo that we all agreed you didn't have to read, had a summary of the history of the property. And to my surprise, that property has some history. I initially just found out some more history from my neighbor. So I'm sorry about that for you guys because that's trouble. I don't mean to be trouble. I guess I am trouble in a way. I found some often wrong protocol. But I discovered I discovered for the last, I think, forty years, at least from nineteen eighty-eight till today, twenty-four. That's thirty-four plus two is thirty-six years. This town has not been applying the code properly.
Okay, let's, I'm gonna cut you off now because we really want to stick to the issue at hand. Whether we think that's true or not is immaterial at this hearing.
So I'm, so the council will probably back me up on this, that me addressing continuing constitutional wrong is very relevant to the matter at hand.
Not to our zoning, I don't think, but.
Yeah, I mean, this, this ZB A.
I don't care.
Forty-two in this case.
Right here.
He makes it clear, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, um, so reading that history, I discovered that Joe Joddy's right at a bioware store, retail sales. I discovered the.
Yeah, we read all that. We're familiar with that.
Those stores clearly fall within permitted use. Why were they forced to get an S U P?
You know, I think that's not for us to be discussing tonight. You know, again, if that's an issue from the past, I wouldn't have any answers to that.
Zone changes.
Yeah, change, so, but.
I don't know why that would be wrong.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So who, how long, how, how long has the most senior member of this board been on the board?
This guy.
Mr. Curtis, how long have you been here as a member?
Of this board?
Yeah.
I forget when I tripped and fell into this, maybe ten years ago or more.
And this predates you, yeah.
Again, but zoning changes, zoning offers change, the officers, it's just not material to this, this particular hearing, which we're trying to decide the interpretation of a code officer's determination, so.
I'm going to object to that on the basis that if there's been a role being committed for the last thirty-plus years, maybe it should be addressed by me bringing it up here. And I think it is very relevant and I'm objecting to bypassing it.
Because zoning board doesn't have any authority to address what you're bringing up though. Like what, what you're seem to be alleging is an ongoing wrongful interpretation or incorrect application of the town's code. That's not a zoning board issue. The zoning board hears variances and interpretation requests. You know, I think what you, you're having a bit more to the town board. Going to the town board and saying, hey folks, I take issue with how you've been applying your zoning code here. You should do something about it.
So there's an officer, an enforcement officer answered directly to the board, or does that officer answer directly to this board?
The employees of the town answer to the town supervisor and the town board.
You're addressing a peer board.
Yep.
You have nothing to do with zoning.
Oh, we are the zoning board, so.
We are the zoning.
We are the zoning board, so.
And interpretation.
Right, so when, when there was an issue, someone wants to, this is the thing that happens to us, wants to put an accessory structure in the front yard, which is not allowable use, they reject that application, they come to us and we discuss whether we will allow it. That's the bulk of what we do here, actually.
So I'm not, I'm not asking for that. I'm.
No, you're, you're not asking for that.
I believe that I don't need any permission to, to open my store. Here's another question I do have for you and it's a legitimate question because I guess it makes sense of it and neither can anyone I speak to.
Okay.
Why, what gives an officer, an enforcement officer, the police power to keep my electricity turned off that was assigned to the building dozens of years ago? I didn't ask for any reason.
That isn't a thing with the zoning.
Yeah, so I think, these are, so these are issues that really don't, are not our purview. And so I, I mean, I understand that you want answers. This isn't the time or place. You're not gonna get them from us. I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm not playing. That's fine. I'm not gonna force you to give them to me, but I'm just trying, I'm just trying to play, hash this out. Because I thought I was here for a different reason. I thought I was here to argue an appeal. I think this is an opportunity to be heard and argue my case, which I guess you gave me a certain opportunity to do so. If I asked for a building permit and it was denied on the basis of zoning issue, I wouldn't be speaking to that here right now.
You, you would be filing an application for either a use variance in an area variance or an interpretation of the county. If, if it's something that relates to the New York State Uniform Code, you would actually appeal a denial of something or an issue of that to the state at the Syracuse office. Is that where the regional offices? If it's a building code, property maintenance code, electric code interpretation.
But you've come to us because you've asked for an interpretation, so that's exactly what's happened.
I think it's you because in writing, Mr. Mr. Nickabacher told me that I had to file an interpretation regarding my permit application to simply fix my electrical box for an inspection. That's.
Uh, well, that's not what, that's not in front of us right now. What's, what's up? So I, I think what's in front of us is very clear, is that you've asked us to interpret the code officer's interpretation of what category of use, what use category your business falls into.
So can I please make part of the record right now since I am objecting?
Okay, if I could ask you to keep it going fast. So we've got people waiting to talk, but go ahead, go ahead.
So are you rushing me right now because of some events here? And I believe that the, the rules of due process with.
Go ahead, just go, go ahead. I am sort of, I'm not rushing you. I'm just hoping.
Certainly, you, you have the right to make your case. And I think what the board is expressing is that you were bringing up a lot of things that are just not in the purview of the zoning.
We can't do anything.
I understand that you might not have understood specifically what the board, the board is. You know, and so bring up whatever you're gonna bring up, but I.
But we can't act on it, is what.
So we're gonna only answer, because I have objections, I have to make this part of the record because in order to challenge today's decisions, it must be made part of the record.
Go ahead, go ahead.
And that's all I'm doing. I have the legal right to do that. And I appreciate not being interrupted because it throws me off my game because I am not an attorney and I'm not very experienced at this. So any interruption is to my detriment. Okay, I had to go through this with the supervisor last week as well, but I understand. So on Tuesday, June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, Shelley Nickabacher wrote an email to me, reading, Mr. Bartley, please find attached the zoning and building permit applications that you submitted on June seventh, two thousand twenty-four, the two one eight six Dryden Road. Both applications have been denied. For that use purpose, crypto mining is not an allowed use in the town of Dryden, code such and such. You can appeal this decision by using the attached interpretation form to appeal to the zoning board of appeals.
And that's what we're doing. That's exactly right.
But I got denied.
So you haven't, you've been, you've asked for an interpretation, not a variance. You've asked for an interpretation of how she determined what your business is or isn't, and that's what we're here for.
So I, I have questions to know. Has any other business in this town, at least from the tenure on this board, ever been approved for a use that's permitted? From what I understood, with Tom and Ray Burger telling me, is that everyone needs to file the permission to open a business. Is this true?
So the town zoning code requires commercial and industrial uses to go through site plan approval before they can be formally opened as a business. Now, that doesn't mean that they appear in front of the zoning board. They actually go in front of the planning board for site plan review. The reason that you are here today is because the third office determined that your particular use is not an allowed use within the town's code. And then as you pointed out, you think that is incorrect, which is why you appealed it for interpretation. And you've said pretty clearly that you believe the plain language of the code should allow your business as a service business. And that, that is the decision that is before the board right now. Anything relating to an electric permit or something like that, or building permit for electrical work is, you know, I, I guess it's, if that was unclear, that you could appeal that to this board. I mean, that, that's not what this board can do. That would need to go to the state board.
A code enforcement officer that says I can't open my power would need to be appealed to a state board decision?
Yeah.
I hope it's under thirty days statute.
That's the building code. That's the building code interpretation.
Where does it say in town code that a commercial building or an industrial building needs to go through a site plan review? Because I. It's in the zoning code. Are you from?
I don't know off the top of my head exactly where, but it's in there.
Does, does anyone on the zoning board know where it says that? Because I, I'd love to read that.
Then they have a separate site plan review ordinance or is it in the zoning law? I don't recall it banned in the zoning.
It's in the zoning law.
Before, just before the permitted use chart.
Okay.
Says all permitted uses, so certain pieces declared are given, and all commercial uses.
Okay, yeah, okay. We can, we can get you that and that.
Who is that gentleman? I'm just curious.
Dave Spout. He's a code officer.
Oh, okay. Hello, Mrs. Spout. I'm sorry, everybody. So I have that code here. Can, can, would somebody, actually I made it part of the record. It's labeled Exhibit A of my federal civil rights lawsuit. Can someone show me where it says that there?
Under two seventy dash eleven dot one, it says that this, under applicability point B, it says that this article applies to all new business group uses or changes from one business group to another. All community uses or changes from one group use to another or changes to uses within the T N D or district, L S R D district, et cetera. All uses requiring a special use permit.
So I would also point to two seventy dash five point two B, which is on that first stage, says the following uses shall be subject to site plan review. One, all business group uses. Two, all community group uses. Three, all uses requiring a special use permit for whatever's specifically required by the sections of this chapter. I'm assuming that that is the provision that places all business, commercial, industrial applications through the site plan review process. Now I'm caveatting that. I don't have the entire list. I don't want to go into the company, so.
Thank you. Don't worry, folks, I didn't have that here.
Twenty seventy dash eleven dot one.
I don't have that with me now, so do that later. I'll just briefly read that part that council read out.
Again, I'm, I'm sorry to keep reminding you, this is not our purview. I'd like to soon ask our board if they have any questions for you before we move on.
How long, do we have a, a part there? How long have we been discussing this?
Half hour.
I don't, I don't, I would think.
You go ahead.
I think that the.
I'm trying to.
Half hour is very reasonable for a building that's been closed for a couple of months now with no.
I'm not saying you're being, I didn't say it was unreasonable. I'm encouraging you to stick to the subject because it's frustrating. We can't rule on so much of what, but go ahead and then.
Has this board ever had a meeting like this before with anyone with a significant property right being held back? That, that you're not used to actually someone asking pertinent, relevant legal questions?
Try the board to not answer that question. It's not irrelevant to the matter at hand.
Well, because the, it seems like everything in this town is a big rush, a rush toilet. A big rush until we actually get down to the, to the legality of everything. And we don't want to speak about anything that's irrelevant and not relevant here. Okay, all right. So I understand what's going on. It's the same thing that was going on the other night. We're in a big hurry. We have a, we have a family here, just for the record. We have a husband, a wife, and we have a few kids. And that's great. We, we know we have a gentleman here who maybe might say something and the, the church is represented with lighter black.
He did.
So, all right, I'm ready for you. Yep, go ahead, please.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, yeah, I. Could you describe how your business operates?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
MJ.
No, I shouldn't qualify that.
Well, I'm not sure.
MJ and Mike, any questions for that question? So, okay. Thank you. We, we heard you. We can't. I'm gonna now ask for comments from anyone else present if you are done. Okay.
I'm done because I was forced to be done. I'm structurally forced to be done, just like I was the other night.
I didn't force you to be done. You can keep going.
There's, there's a record here. There's a record.
I was encouraging you because I did see someone leave. I, you can keep. I was encouraging you because I did see someone leave. I, you can keep going. I'm not saying your time is up. I just was trying to encourage you because so much of what you've addressed, it aren't things we can rule on. But if you have more you want to say, go for it. Okay, thank you.
I'll be following along there. So next we can serve with.
Okay, uh. Are there comments from anyone present, anyone else present? Okay, yeah, say your name.
Yeah, it's been a while. Uh, Joe Hasmelowski, twenty-one eighty Dryden Road. Um, the last time I was before this board was when something was happening. To the rest of my property, which was obviously the solar farm.
Mm-hmm.
And the uh, the cell tower. And uh, Mr. Bartolini brought up. Uh, the the question about the board and have they addressed things like that? Well, I remember specifically when Barath. Addressed this board uh, with the uh, problems of the setbacks of the solar farm. And this board looked at the um, laws. In the town and ruled that some of, at at least in the first property that Barack put ahead was. The setbacks weren't, um, didn't meet the code in in the uh, in the town. So this board ruled. That Barack couldn't put his solar farm, solar panels that close to people's property. And we appreciate that because we bought up the solar farm. And I know that's not what we're discussing tonight. I'm sorry. Um, but it's just a little um, pretense on why we're here. Now we're here for the property to the east of our property. And we had issues with this property for. Well, Mr. Bartolini said forty years. Really, when it when it was a bridal boutique, it 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 really didn't cause a lot of problems. There were some issues, but not, not big issues. But since then. We've had a lot of businesses, or I don't know what they are. I I, some of them were crazy that I didn't even know if they were approved by the town. That they just moved in. And um, we we had lots of issues, lots of problems. As you know, I have a horse farm. And our property in one particular area. Is fourteen point seven feet from the new Mr. Bartini's building, not. Um, you know, our property, probably our properties lines are are co-existent, but from his actual building. Is fourteen point seven feet from my property, which is pretty close, I would say. So our our concern always is that any business is going in there. We want to make sure that um, you know, the 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 disturbance to what we have. Um, isn't isn't great, isn't it? Especially for my horses. The horse barn is is another fifteen or twenty feet further. From the property line, but but relatively close. And we've been there since nineteen eighty-six. And it's it's a beautiful piece of property. Uh, we love being there. And um, we we just want to do everything we can to protect our property. And we have every bit of confidence that this board will will just make the right decision based on the laws in the town. Um, you you did it for, you did it before when we we had issues. And uh. You know, we had no, no problem with the way this board rules and this board always rules based on, based on the law. And we we, like I said, we have full confidence that you'll do that again. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else?
So I would like to address those two laws. Now that I had a few moments for settling my legal mind. How those two laws that were written by council, by the board member, how they don't apply to a permitted use. Uh, a permitted use property.
You want to come again? The microphone so it can be recorded properly. Let me just ask one. Is anyone else planning to speak? No? Okay.
Thank you for the opportunity. Sure, it was recorded. I speak loudly. I apologize.
Before you, before you go on, I guess I'm just a quick question.
Sure.
How is it relevant to the interpretation decision that's being asked of the zoning board?
So what I'm saying is, is that that plain language never should have. Been brought into the interpretation by the zoning officer because it is plain, simple language that an eight-year-old would understand. So the zoning officer is, when there's a question as to plain language or the meaning of words, then the zoning officer. Can make a recommendation to the board for a review. Or she could say it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't work. And then we come here and they can, they can double check as a safeguard before going to court. Whether it be seventy-eight or civil rights and then a seventy-eight within. So I'm saying that it should have never gotten to an interpretative stage. And this is my opportunity here at this safeguard meeting to protect my rights. I'm required to come to you and appeal. I have no right to go to any court. Until you folks have a chance to make current decision right or wrong. Then once you come up with a final decision as decision headmakers in the municipality. If you're wrong, then I have standing to bring either an article seventy-eight or civil rights, or civil rights to hear New York over to seventy-eight. Or if civil rights is done, then I can bring that action back timely, even two years later to state court and argue it there. So my argument is, you've reached, and I've been directed for an interpretive. Request. I'm saying, you're calling it an interpretive request. I'm saying she made a mistake of reaching the interpretive uh. Standard. She never, she never had a police power to get to that interpretive standard. Because the language is so simple. What I do honestly believe. Is that that code, your constitution, that code, it was written wonderfully. It covers so much. It has noise code. It covers service business. That's weak and it has not kept up with the times. We didn't know when we were eight years old or twelve years old, data centers, crypto center, crypto mining was gonna suck all the green power out of the country. We didn't know that. But. It covers service business. That service business definition is not an emergency here today. It's not an emergency. You folks, you have a responsibility to ask the board to change the law. To to reflect what a service business actually is, because right now it covers what I'm doing. Yes, sir.
That's a quick question.
And I'll answer, I promise.
Okay, thank you. The uh. Uh, not for the town of Dryden, but I was a code officer for twenty years.
I respect that.
You've been Shelley's position. Someone came in with a request that you made to. To uh, permit your business in a district. Uh, one of the first things I might ask, particularly if it's an unusual thing, crypto mining. I wouldn't right away jump to the conclusion that using plain English that that was a mining operation. The question I would ask is, can you explain the nature of your business and how it operates? And I asked you that question not long ago when you said no.
Well, I didn't let you ask that. And that apparently seemed rather rude from a legal standpoint. I didn't want this, this, this record to get too crowded with what I would explain as as a. Uh, a data center business, a crypto mining hosting business, but I do wanna, I I do want to answer your question. And I know, I will, because you deserve the respect of that.
Well, excuse me, how about our job and Shelley's job at the time? Is to determine whether your business fits in this category. In order to do that, it's not unreasonable to ask, how does your business operate? Can you describe your business? So I get people coming, do you own the machines? Do people pay rent on the machines? What, how does it operate? And then look at the definition and say, does it fit? If what you say is no. Um, that's the end of the discussion.
No, I I enjoy that. No, that's hard no to you. And and I want to just qualify that no as mainly, I didn't want to uh, mess this up. Because what you're asking me to do right now could potentially be errors by which I can be attacked. Uh, if I do not present it properly. So so I will explain it. I will also explain that I submitted. To, on this appeal, probably a six-page printout of what a hosting service provider is. Uh, and 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 if anyone does explain, and I, we will talk, we.
We got, we got.
We will talk friendly, we will talk amicably, and we will talk like neighbors going forward. Because I can't help but snap into legal defensive law enforcement mode. I just can't help it. It's within, it's in me. And when I feel as I'm being personally challenged, I have to become defensive. So you are right.
So you did receive that offer.
Thank you, yes, good. Um, so just like that clip I got out of the internet on the hosting service provider. I scrutinized the internet to see what it was, because I actually asked myself, what am I doing? Are they right? Just like you're asking me. And I hit that internet hard. And I sounded over and over and over that it's a service. So let me tell you what 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 I plan to do. That way you can reasonably do your job and say, maybe this guy's right. Maybe we have to update our code. We didn't think this would ever happen. We don't like, we don't like that. Uh, we don't like mining. It wastes good energy. So that, everyone knows that. I don't even like it for that reason, but I like data. And crypto will get me to a data center. That's my, that's my ultimate goal, if you're curious. I swear that. I'll swear on, I don't lose perjury. Um. So this is what happens. Let's say. I don't know, but this young man, he owns, he, my my son owns a miner. He pays uh, Revolution Mining in Texas, uh, approximately two hundred dollars a month to host. His miner that he bought. He's had it sent there. Uh, they clean it, they maintain it, they provide the infrastructure, they provide software updates for it. Yes, sir.
When you say miner, are you talking about a piece of equipment, a server or?
Yes, sir. A crypto mining computer. It's called an piece of the mine. We're we're talking about crypto miner, because that's, that's the touchy subject here right now.
I just wanted, so when you say a miner is a piece of equipment.
And by the way, I don't like crypto miners either. I don't. And it's a means to to an end for me to get to a data center, which we all need and we use every day over and over. Okay. So my son owns that. He hosts it there. Um. It's, it's, it's called a hosting service. It's called a colocation service. There's a whole bunch of definitions, but they, it's a service. Uh, so this is what I plan to do. Um. We're gonna, we we're going to plan, if we can, first, uh, crypto minus four clients. We're, we're gonna make a pretty good profit. There's no doubt about it. We know that. Um. But this is what I'm really trying to do. We're also gonna host, uh. Hardware for ACash, ACash, uh, I O dot net, Render I O. These are all these new uh, companies that do remote hosting. That I can start a data center by partnering with them. And people will have their units at my facility. Uh, and I will get a commission cut. So I don't, I don't ask you, but I I went to law school. I know a lot of things, but I don't know whose data is is data center. I can't actually try that. So my son here, I'll beg for a second, but it's very relevant. I'm not wasting time. It's actually an interesting story. During COVID. I took him out of school. I self-cored him because I didn't want him to be part of what was going on. Okay? We didn't want him screwed up academically. He's a great student. Self-cored him. I said, well, he's application for going there for West Point in Annapolis. And he was handicapped now, being uh, homeschooled as far as I was concerned. He's not part of the sports team for that year, which hurt. That's very big with the army. Um, so I said, John, what are we doing? Let's start a data center, you and I. We started at my commercial facility in Jackson Valley, New York, which I paid a high electric rate at. Didn't matter because the goal was. Again, under the, under all, I'll say it, and he'll attest, and everyone we know, family and friends will attest, he was gonna run it by solar. Potentially, we're gonna underground fuel through air cooling, which you can't do in a home. We can't cool your home with air. It's not allowed in this state. But we could cool a garage shed. We we hired First Night to come and put a high-speed line. I know what that cost. Paid a lot of money. Um, we had a very expensive data system installed. Dad financed it. I used one credit card just to keep track of what it was gonna cost, because it was kind of like a business venture, even though it was an academic. Uh, venture for him to build his resume and experience, because right now he is a full scholarship, Army ROTC, uh, a student. Uh, for cybersecurity. So the four years ago, uh. We had a legal dispute with the fiber optic company that was giving us that true high-speed data center service. Uh, the whole thing fell apart on us. He was able to get his uh, networking system up. He did rent out some server space to kids for gaming servers. So it was nominal money made, but he did get up and running. Of course, the first thing he was attacked by Russia in China about a hundred times, but. We did this down there in an effort to get him the resume. So there's a background to all of this. It's not like, oh, John Bartini and John Bartini's son are coming here to my crypto. Like they ruined upstate, what they did with the turbines and the dirty gas. I call them dirty, I call them dirty, uh, dirty miners, I call them. That's horrible. They, they, they noise polluted all those neighborhoods. It was an emergency up there. They had to do a moratorium up there. They had to stop them.
Right, make sure I got this straight. So you, you buy the building down on uh, Route thirteen. And uh, your son or other people have. Uh, mining equipment, uh, computer equipment, put it there in your building. And they pay you, he's paying two hundred dollars down in Texas, but maybe you charge him less because he's your son or more because he's your son. And then you insist how you you get money because from that. Uh, and you in turn maintain that equipment. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, we're we're hands-on people.
So you go uh, you and provide the security and this and that. That equipment, then maybe you buy some of your own equipment and have it there as well, but.
I told you that, that's not the big goal here. We had, to be honest with you, other people's equipment.
You're ho- uh, hosting it. You're given with a place to be. You're servicing the equipment, you're providing security and presumably paying for the utilities.
Right, I'm already charging utilities as well.
Then they pay you some amount per month or some percentage or whatever.
They pay per kilowatt hour.
They pay for.
So, so let's, let's, let's open discuss, because that's what we're here for. By the way. Next thing I would do is put an application to put a brand new ice building up. On same footprint. Which no one has heard me say that yet because I'm embarrassed to own that thing that's down there right now. Because I agree, it's, it, it's horrible. Uh, so if no one's heard me say that, uh, but I do own a beautiful piece of property in Jackson Valley, New York, which if you go to Google, go to the address. And take a look at it on the street view, you go, wow, he's right. It's really nice. Matter of fact, I had the nicest property in in that village. Uh, and I met some resistance fixing it up. From neighbors who thought maybe I was just like everyone else, but I'm not. I'm not like everyone else. I'm actually very honorable. And I wouldn't hurt you guys. But there is a problem. It really is. And I get it.
I think I understand the bill. Is there any other aspects of the bill?
No, that's uh, just so you do know, it's, so I pay four point seven seven cents a kilowatt hour on average, based on New York State Electric and Gas uh. Data. You can go through their website, download their yearly spreadsheets, and you can cross average. At night, it's it's more during the day it's less, because there's less demand, unless it's hot. But it seems like at night you guys have big demand here from what I saw, uh, when it gets cold and over for one month.
Sure.
I went to Cornell. I know it gets cold up here. Um.
Okay.
So arbitrage, in other words, I'll, I'll pay four point seven. But I'll charge eight or nine and with excellent service that Texas does not provide, because they don't. They have dirty air cool machines. By the way, immersion cooling is the new technology. AI machines and miners are being created for all to one in immersion control. Because the heat is just too intense for the demands. So like, I'm actually on cutting edge. So it might seem like you guys are forcing me to go. Immersion, I found the loophole here, right? I I'm not air, making air uh, fan noise and disturbing my neighbors. But what's going on is I'm adopting technology that all the cheapos are resisting. Giving poor service and getting a bad reputation, but I'm, I'm doing the best.
Well, maybe, maybe giving us too much credit. Uh, we're really focused on such an incredibly simple matter. That uh, I'm I'm finding this interesting. I'm not really as advanced as you may imagine we are, uh.
I don't know what I'm, I'm, I'm a little paranoid to be honest. I'm basically, I'm, you know, to be honest, I'm, I'm, I am brave and bold. I'm like, I raise my children to be so. But, you know, you're good. And it's not nice to be right here. It's not nice. To know I'm gonna like them, you know, to have to hear negative and to agree with them. About how bad that place is, because I am now there the burden of that place, so I want to fix it because it's horrible. Um. Do I almost feel like I want to leave driving? I'm stuck now because that property, if I don't do anything to fix that property up, who's going to? Let's be realistic. I'm their best friend and they don't even know it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna leave now.
Okay.
I'd like to say that.
You too, thank you. Um, are there any response letters, engineers report, planning department? There was one other. Uh, and written responses. Was there one other neighbor that sent an email?
Um, there was a letter.
Yes.
This is Carl.
This is Carl, yes. Do you have that?
We can. The only one.
Okay, do everyone see that?
No, this is the one that people are in the apartments and mother goes in one.
Oh, I could see that. I, I don't have a, that I could.
It was in the package.
Yeah, is it, is it in the package?
Yeah, I really like.
I read it too, I'd like to make a motion. Yeah.
Maybe it was sent.
Yeah, he said, and it's hatch me, um, did everyone see that?
Yeah.
Okay.
The chief thought there were better uses for the property.
Right, right, okay, so I might add that to the record, but also make a motion to waive the reading of it, since I don't have it in front of me, cheers.
I would certainly move that or second it, wherever you need.
All in favor, aye, okay, um, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I usually would tell them their next step, I would like to make a motion to, um. Dismiss this without prejudice, the town board enacted a moratorium. That really rendered this moot by current law, so that is my motion, I'll second it. Anyone else in favor?
Well, I'm gonna have a period of discussion, or?
Sure, good.
Yeah, I, I would oppose that, uh, reasons I share with the board, but I share with the audience. I think the applicant came to the town. Applied for a permit, uh, was turned down based on. An interpretation of the zoning law, which let this code officer to. Conclude that the use he was proposing was not included. In the zoning law, and therefore. From the preamble, was that they, of that section, use is not. Specifically permitted or prohibited, I think is the language, is that correct, Sean? Okay. And the, uh, the applicant felt agreed by that, because his reading of the zoning law. Let him to conclude otherwise, and I think he has, he has the option in that case. To appeal the, uh, code officer's decision to this board, and then we. Would look at the zoning law and the application, talk to the applicant. And then we would make a determination as to whether or not we thought that the code officer's interpretation was correct. Or whether, uh, we thought it should be otherwise, in which case we'll state what it should have been. And, uh, I, uh, I think that that's. Important and a good thing to have that type of relief in the zoning laws, sorry, by law. Uh, and, uh, I think that the applicant's entitled to that, and on the interim. The town has adopted, or I, I haven't followed closely, but I guess it's adopted a moratorium. Uh, which they would. Uh, step in at long last and improve the definitions involved, and that's at least for this particular use. Hopefully, uh, they'll be so inspired that they'll actually look at the zoning law and look at all. But, uh. What the, I don't know what the applicant's recourse is in this situation, he feels aggrieved, and, uh. I think that this board can make a decision. Uh, with regard to, at the time, at the time that this action by the code officer occurred. Whether or not we agree with that interpretation. And I, I don't think that we need to, uh, that the moratorium needs to affect that. I think, uh, based on our determination, the applicant will have an opportunity then to move forward, or to return to the zoning. Officer, or file an article seventy-eight, or do whatever he wants to do. But I feel very comfortable, I've looked through a lot of information on this, I feel very comfortable moving ahead and making, uh. A determination about whether or not I agree, uh, with the, uh, action that the. Code officer took in this place, and also to state my reasons, and I, I think that. The applicant's entitled to that, and, uh, that's what I would propose, that we simply move ahead. And look for evidence we have, and what we've heard tonight, and, uh, make a determination, I don't see any reason to table this, and I don't think it's fair.
I'll go ahead, Ben, Jay, you know, a local law was, was just passed to put a moratorium in this. And isn't that what they'll do, uh, define what it is?
That's my, I mean, I don't think I'm comfortable with deciding what this is. I feel I have the information I need to say, yes, it's a service business, or no, it's a service business.
We can make that case, I'm, I'm perfectly willing to make that case, I'll tell you why I believe it is.
Well, I don't wanna necessarily go there, but go ahead.
I, I would, I would interject that the moratorium that was passed has definitions in it, which based on the gentleman's description of. What he's actually doing seems to fit squarely within the definition of a data processing facility under the moratorium. Which is, uh, very, you know, it's now, it's, it's not ambiguous anymore at all. If there ever was, but now it's very clearly defined as a thing under the town's laws, which is prohibited under the moratorium, and so.
And that, that's subsequent to this.
Ben wants us to go back in time to when he applied, when we were asked to hear it, and in that interim before this hearing was the moratorium. I am not comfortable with that.
Yeah, as, as, as he was mentioning that, I actually, I had a, it occurred to me, I have a really good example of a, of a chain in law. That rendered a decision by a state agency in this case moot, and the court. Flagged that, and, you know, I was like, let me tell you about it, cause it's all public record, so we have a client who wanted to open a liquor store. Out in Franklin, um, and as a requirement under the state liquor authority rules, you have to have your liquor store on a public thoroughfare. And he placed it, uh, he wanted to put it in a little plaza area that was accessible through a driveway. And the state liquor authority denied it, they said it's not on a public thoroughfare, because it's on a driveway, and we pointed out all sorts of reasons why. We do meet their definition of a public thoroughfare, they said, nope, we're not gonna listen to you, they finally denied it, we filed an article seventy-eight. That has been pending for a while. That was filed, uh, in February, in April this year, the state, as part of their budget, changed the law. There is no longer a requirement that your liquor store needs to be in a public thoroughfare. The court said, hey, the law just changed, this is allowed now. Um, therefore, you can go forward, say, hey, liquor authority, you're not going to deny them, right, you're moving this forward. The court didn't go back and say, well, because the law at the time you applied, didn't allow it. Were, we're gonna look at that, they looked at the law as it exists at the time the decision was made, because changes in laws can render prior decisions moot. It's no longer necessary for the court in that, in the case I just talked about, to decide whether or not this SLA was correct. About public thoroughfare definition, cause it didn't matter anymore, in this instance. It's similar, because the town board has changed the law and defined this, given terms for this specifically. So there's no longer a need to.
But I would be much more similar if the state had adopted a moratorium on liquor store applications until such time that they made these. Decisions, and, and I. He may be, when he goes to court, he may find that same exact scenario occurring, I don't know. But I'm just saying, he has to go through this board to get to his article seventy-eight, I have no problem. Making a determination, and he can go ahead and, and vote it, article seven, if he wants to, I don't.
Do you wanna make a motion, Ben, on what you wanna do?
You have a motion.
I have a motion.
I, my proposal, I'm telling you why I would, I will vote against that.
Okay.
That's all I'm telling you, discussion.
I can table my mo, well, I, I will repeat my motion, which is that I would like to dismiss this without prejudice. Uh, because, partly because town board enacted a moratorium that re, rendered by current law. Us making this, render this moot by current law. Not the most elegant wording of that, but we can tweak it later, so now I will ask again, is there a second on it?
Well, you have a second, you have the motion on the floor.
Yeah, okay, Ben, um, do I have, uh, uh, the rest of the boards weighing in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Ben, you're gonna do, you're gonna. It's so.
You're closing the discussion, now you're, you're taking a vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm opposed.
Okay, and we have three, four, and one opposed, okay. Okay, so the motion has passed.
Right.
So the only other thing we have to do is we have minutes from July meeting. Um, just. Yeah, we are, yeah, bye you guys, bye. Um.
Can you find that, Craig?
Yeah, take care, yeah, all right.
Were you here for planning, Craig?
Yeah.
Yeah, probably, okay, so, um, did everybody get a chance to read the draft minutes of July ninth? Yes, you, Ben, I think you had gone over them.
I made a correction, that, again, I, I didn't get a copy of the corrections, I have no idea if they made it in or not.
They were in the packet, can you glance that, and we can, you don't wanna?
The packet along with the, I don't know.
Or maybe they were right here, maybe they were in the packet, you wanna take a look, or you wanna table it till the next one?
These are them?
Yeah, these are them. I'm getting my next. I think.
Yes, I, um, the town needs to keep, I mean, you, you've got it, so you're standing there, and, um, and I email to be, to ensure it's over here.
Yeah.
I mean, I will be doing the same for my office.
So, I mean, I can keep that, you have to, you, you can have it, cause I suspect I, I'm gonna, while we're still. So, are we, we're waiting for Ben to take a look at his corrections, to see if they've been entered into the minutes, once he accepts or rejects. I will close the hearing.
Okay.
Okay, replace comments from the board paragraph as follows, in the course of discussion with the board. The seventeen twenty-nine.
George, your understanding that you put in most of that, all of Ben's corrections? Yeah, okay.
Uh, this, this doesn't include my changes, but. What, what's here?
Okay, so let's table the approval of the minutes till the next time.
Send it to everybody, I think I copied it, everybody didn't.
Yes, certainly you did.
You did. It says here, comments from the board, and then it says, and this is what you just gave me, there's no financial data to show hardship, I think I told her to change it. To, uh, comments from the board, in the course of discussion with the board. The applicant testified. Uh, that they had no dollars and sense evidence, this is entirely different.
Okay, okay.
What I give her falls right in line with what's required for, for a use variance.
Okay.
And, uh, it's not in here.
Okay, so let, let's, um, one, two, we'll resend them to Joe, we can look at these and approve them next meeting, and I'll look at them again, see your comments. Okay, so I'd like to move to close the hearing. All in favor, aye. You okay to that, Ben?
I want to make a clean sweep of it and oppose everything, but not, you know.
All right, thank you.
So Dave, I must ask you, uh, I didn't wanna ask you during the hearing, but I wanted to ask you before. I couldn't remember, Clarity Connect was once located in the old Cooper's Barracks down on Farn Road, is that right? Ne- never in the town of Dryden that you recall?
Too, right, or he said, or he said, why does she get asked two questions?
Where? Okay. Okay. That's in the, uh, village of Lansing.
No, that's.
That's in the town?
I'll be put together.
Yes.
Oh, Hand Shaw, Hand Shaw, down where the Cooper Barracks, are the armory is. Do they have a bunch of servers and things, or? I would imagine they do.
So he has applied for a very large. And so I called, she said that, um, he may have been asked to provide an electrical.
So, so what's happening at Pop Share on Friday night?